So, welcome everybody. This is the Florida Citizens Alliance Collier County Board of County Commissioners, Primary Candidate Forum. We have a number of the candidates who have joined us today. We're really glad you could join us as well. And we're going to have a good conversation and hopefully introduce everybody to the candidates and help everybody vote with the greatest of wisdom. Well, I'm Rick Stevens. I'm one of the Managing Directors of the Florida Citizens Alliance. We are a 501(c)(3) nonpartisan group. We work together with all of the people that care about K-12 education, trying to come up with solutions that will help make things better. One of the things that we do in regard to education is help voters and students realize that they can become informed about candidates and issues and the principles that guide the candidates and their decisions. And so, we're glad to hear from these candidates for the Collier County Board of County Commissioners. All qualified candidates were invited and we're pleased to have these candidates join us today. We'll begin with candidate introductions. And I, earlier this afternoon, just drew names and put them in no particular order, but we'll start with District One and have all of the candidates have the opportunity to introduce themselves with a one-minute opening statement. So, it's going to look like that this was done differently, but this is really the way I drew it out, gentlemen. So, we're going to begin with Mark Bachelor. Mark, if you'd introduce yourself, please.
Well, I'm Mark Bachelor. I'm also running for District One Collier County Commissioner. What I'd like to bring in this position is my 30 years of business experience working for corporations such as Xerox of Philadelphia. I have vetted contractors, worked with profit and loss. I've worked with personnel issues, legal issues, legal contracts, purchased industrial buildings, and I've had success with my career. I tie that in with my Rexon University and Xerox training and conservative values against higher taxes, you know, for the environment, clean water. I think I'd be a perfect fit for the Collier County's next District One Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So glad you could join us today. Next, we'll go to William Douglas. Bill, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for hosting us today. I've lived in Collier County for 35 years. I started working on farms, moved to Collier County 35 years ago, was the GM of restaurants, found my love as a firefighter and worked my way up through the ranks as Lieutenant, Acting Battalion Chief, and retired with 30 years on the service right here in the community with East Naples/ Greater Naples Fire Department. I've owned a couple of businesses in town, very successful businesses, volunteered in many organizations, and was a President of the Homeowners Association where I live now. I run for Collier County Commissioner to continue to make sure the quality of life that we've moved to Collier County, we continue that by managing our growth, smart growth, watch our environment, make sure our water's clean and our beaches are pristine, and continue to make sure we have areas for workforce, senior, and veterans housing, and many more. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Pleased to have you join us today. Next up is John Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins, if you would introduce yourself to our audience, please.
Hey, folks. My name is John Jenkins and I am a little out of order here for you, just in that I'm the Democrat running. I'm not in the primary between your other three candidates that you're listening to today. They are going to need on August 18th to choose somebody to face me in the general election. So, I am your Democratic candidate on November 3rd, 2020, and I hope to earn your trust and support between now and then. I'm a local guy, grew up here. It's eight years old. My parents bought in 1974 down in Marco. I've owned a small business here for 23 years. I've raised two children in the Collier County School System. I've been a President of the Kiwanis Club. I've been Guardian at Light'em. I have been coach for Little League Baseball. I am your Democratic candidate for Collier County Commissioner. And yet, one more time, I hope to earn your trust and support, working for the people that make Collier County work.
Thank you, John, and welcome. Glad you could join us. And our final candidate for District One is Rick LaCastro. Rick, welcome.
Hi, my name is Rick LaCastro. I'm a conservative Republican, running for Collier County Commissioner, District One. I grew up in St. Petersburg, Florida. My parents moved from New York when I was a young child, so lived in Florida basically most of my life. I'm a graduate of the United States Air Force Academy and went on to have a 24-year career, retiring as a full Colonel in the Air Force. Been a base commander multiple times. I was honored to serve two Presidents. I am a combat veteran, and I was a Senior NATO Commander in Europe and in several other places downrange. Also, had quite a bit of business experience. What brought me to Naples is I had a lot of experience turning hospitals around in the military that were in trouble, and I was recruited by Physicians Regional and I was the COO of Physicians Regional on Collier Boulevard in East Naples. This is a $2 billion county, and it requires experience and qualifications, I believe, from lots of different entities, not just here in Collier County, to have success and to make our community better.
Thank you, Rick. Pleased that you could join us today. We'll turn now to our District Five candidates, and we have two from District Five. And we'll begin with Bill McDaniel. Bill, welcome.
Thank you, Rick. I want to say good afternoon to everybody. I am Bill McDaniel. I am your County Commissioner for District Five, and I am also a candidate seeking reelection. I want to say, first off, I'm not going to go a lot into my bio. You can hop over to our website, votebillmcdaniel.com. My bio's there, my credentials are there, my voting record is there. I want to say this as a message. It has been my honor to serve the residents of Collier County. And I've said regularly while I've been up there in Deas, the folks that live in District Five are the ones who can vote for me. I represent all 360,000 people that live in Collier County. And I want to thank you all for the opportunity to share a few of my thoughts this afternoon.
Well, thank you for joining us. We're really glad to have you here. And the second candidate from District Five is Mark Petcher. Mark, or Mike, I'm sorry, I said Mark. It's Mike Petcher. My favorite book in the Bible is Mark, so I get that mixed up, I guess. But welcome, Mike Petcher.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate that. My name is Mike Petcher. I was born in Naples. I was raised in Naples. I've been here all my life. I actually was raised all my life in District Five. I'm just here to, I'm not a politician, I'm here to give the people out there the voice that they deserve. I represent the voting interests to a T. I'm just a regular person doing this so I can save my community, not just the estates or, but all of District Five, Buckley and Everly City. I think they need a voice too. And I'm here to represent, try and represent them to the best of my ability.
That's great. Thanks, Mike. Glad you could join us. Well, let me explain a little bit about our forum format for our audience, and so we'll all know what we're hoping to do today. We have invited two moderators to provide the questions for our forums, and we're going to ask the candidates to answer their questions in one minute. We try to give succinct answers so that we have a chance to cover more issues and answer more questions. Rebutts are permitted at the discretion of the moderators. For example, if one candidate mentions another candidate by name, then the moderators may choose to give time for a rebuttal. Again, all of that is at the discretion of the moderators. The moderators will choose the order the candidates answer the questions in and give each candidate the opportunity to answer every question. The moderators have sole discretion over the questions they ask. The Florida Citizens Alliance does not tell the moderators what they must ask or what they can't ask. We trust the moderators and put that responsibility in their hands. If somebody in our audience submitted a question for the forum, then we've given those to the moderators. But again, it's up to them to decide whether or not to use those, and they can if they want to. We also asked all the candidates to complete a constitutional survey. The moderators have a copy of that survey, but not the candidate answers, and they can choose questions from that if they wish. Going forward, based upon our work as the Florida Citizens Alliance and in partnership with the Christian Family Coalition, we will publish a voter guide to help the voters make an informed decision. That will come a little bit later in the process. Well, after all of that, let me introduce our moderators. First up is Dominique Clemmons. Dominique just graduated from Hillsdale College and moved back to Collier County. And Collier County is her home, and we're excited to let you know that she's also joined the Florida Citizens Alliance as our Marketing Director. Actually, today she's pinch hitting for Doug Lewis. Doug Lewis is a Naples Attorney. Some of you may be familiar with Doug, and he was going to help us out, but scheduling conflicts made that impossible. So, he sent Dominique his questions, and so she has benefited from his insights as well, and we're really glad to have her. She's prepared to help us out today, and I'm sure she will represent Doug and the citizens of Collier County very well. Our second moderator is Bob Harden. He's well-known in Collier County. Residents know him because he's the host of the Bob Harden Show. He's been active in the Naples community for many years, and we've worked with Bob in the past, and he's helped us moderate in-person forums, and we're glad to have him help us today. So, Bob and Dominique, welcome. We're glad to have you here. And Bob, I'm going to turn it to you, and you and Dominique can say hello and begin the questioning.
Okay, well, thank you Pastor Rick. It's a real pleasure to be able to participate in this. I'm looking forward to learning and understanding where you all stand in the position. So, I'm going to start off with a question from the audience. The question is, "Our Constitution acknowledges our individual freedom and the limited role of government. Many believe the intrusion by local government and state governments on our individual rights because of COVID-19 has been excessive, even unconstitutional. Do you agree and why?" And let's start off with Mike Petcher.
All right, thank you. I do agree that it is a major infringement of our constitutional rights, closing down our rights to go to privacy, our rights, our rights in general. You know, I have to decide what's best for my healthcare. I don't want the government deciding what's best for my healthcare. The state and the government has really put an infringement on the rights of the people by telling them they have to mandatory stay-at-home order. It's mandatory that you can't go on the beaches, you can't use public facilities that are within, well within my rights.
Thank you, Mike. Let's go to Bill McDaniel.
And get the mute button off. I'll be happy to answer that. And again, you know, I've been the one of the ones on the front line with this process, and I concur that there are and have been constitutional right infringements by these stay-at-home orders. If you'll recall from a voting record, I am the one that continued indefinitely the Antonian stay-at-home order that was proposed here for Collier County back in early March. I am the one who has lobbied and kept our boat ramps open during the entire process. I am the one who lobbied and kept our beaches open as long as they did. And it's important to remember, this is a one-in-five process. I'm not, I am one of five county commissioners, and so the decision is made by a majority. And I have regularly fought to keep our constitutional rights protected and allow for our citizens to move about.
Thank you, Bill. Let's move to Rick LaCastro.
Well, as the former COO of Physicians Regional here in East Naples, I will say initially, when there was a lot of things not known about this virus, I think we had to be careful. But that quickly passed, and I do feel our constitutional rights were infringed upon. I've attended every County Commissioner meeting since September, and I watched Bill McDaniel be the lone voice, and I sat in the audience and fully agreed with him. I mean, once we knew that the pandemic wasn't as severe from a healthcare standpoint and that we've had other things such as HIV that have been much more severe and other pandemics, I think then the time was right to ensure we weren't infringing on people's rights. If you're worried about social distancing, I can tell you it's a lot worse in the cereal aisle at Walmart than it is on a five-mile stretch of beach. And so, I think we could have made decisions a lot sooner to allow people to choose for themselves if they wanted to go to a beach, if they wanted to go to, you know, public areas and whatnot, when we were shutting things down that the public had a right to go to, when the healthcare numbers didn't support doing that, we definitely infringed upon their rights, and I would have voted with Commissioner McDaniel.
Thank you, Rick. John Jenkins?
Yeah, I'm going to take a little bit of a different view here, folks. I think that we are recklessly going into a situation here that we have no idea about. And I've heard my friend who I absolutely respect as a, you're never really a former military, you are or you're not, but in the first two rules of law of war are number one, you know your enemy, and number two, you go into battle with the equipment needed to fight your enemy. That's one, and that's two. I don't care what force you're in, I don't get, that's one, that's two. We neither went into this war knowing our enemy nor with the equipment that we needed to fight this enemy. And I really, I really hope, I pray every day, that we're going to be opening up and we're going to be doing all these wonderful things, but I hope and pray that that's the result and not the chaos that we're about to see. We just had the fourth day in a row of record-high increased cases in the state of Florida. Those four days, I know two of the opponents that you've heard speak don't really like percentages, they like real numbers, but those real numbers, those four record days in a row account for 17% of all the COVID cases in the state of Florida.
John, I'm going to have to catch you off. You got a two-minute delay. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Let's move to William Douglas, please.
All right. I do believe, right off the bat, we did infringe on people's rights. But as a first responder, and I've dealt with many, many viruses throughout my career, the third years being on the front line, we didn't have a solution. We had an unknown enemy, what to deal with, but as the information came in, we started to learn. And without knowing the information, we asked everybody to be part of the solution and to stay at home. And I think that was the proper thing to do. But like I said, as we got the information, we should have opened up a little bit sooner and put the ability of our residents and their responsibility back in place with social distancing, using masks, and very simple, if you're afraid, just don't go out. Stay at home and have your groceries delivered back to the house, whatever you want. So, again, I'm on with a lot of my colleagues. We infringed a little rights, but we had to do it for the right reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Mark Bachelor, please.
Yeah, I really believe that most of these stay-at-home orders in crushing the economy, I'm not a believer in executive orders, whether they're presidential or governor. I think a lot of this could be legislative. This is why we elected these people to make these decisions, not one person. It kind of creates this king-type thing. I was against the commissioner.
You just got to hold it up.
I know that the commissioners voted to restrict some of the beach access during the weekends, which I was against that. So, a lot of these things infringed on our civil rights and our civil liberties, and the government is there to inform us, help us, protect us, give us all the tools and resources we need for a healthy society, but not to tell us how to live. It's us to make our own decisions after, based on we get correct information.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, I'll turn it over to Dominique.
Hi, I'd just like to say thanks for having me. My first question is, what is your expertise in analyzing and controlling budgets in the magnitude of Collier Counties? And I would like to start with Mr. Douglas.
My expertise, being in the restaurants, running a business and budget, they were small, but a budget is a budget. As a Collier County Commissioner, we do have staff to manage it, but as a Commissioner, we need to pay attention and watch the budget and make sure we are not overspending in areas. And especially with the virus through here, we are going to see a huge tax money coming in from our visitors not being here. So, we're going to have to tighten our belts and do the proper thing and continue and do a better job and make sure we are not overspending and keep an eye on it as a Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
I don't have any experience operating a budget the size of Collier County. The largest budget that I have experienced in managing was as the Chair of the Zone CF Coordinator for Zone Durham Region. That was a Kinsman project in Canada, organizing eight different clubs in three different zones, each having their own budgets, melding them into a common budget. And we put on the biggest Oktoberfest on the east side of Toronto. We raised $25,000 that year for Sistic by Roses. When I have a problem, I go to experts. I expect my experts to give me the facts. I make my decisions based on those facts. I will not write your budget, but I will certainly represent your interests in the budget being drawn.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Bachelor.
Well, working for Xerox and in the corporate world, I've managed budgets, created my budgets for operating expenses, reserves, whatever, building salaries, everything. Fortunately for the residents of Collier County, the commissioners really don't manage most of the budget. So, we do have a budget commission for that, so you should sleep well tonight. But we do have a lot of decisions on discretionary money, which I think there's a lot of waste in the county, especially where it comes into purchasing certain properties and land deals. I'm very disturbed by this, and I see it as a big waste of money. So, when I see the commissioners make decisions on certain funds for the county, that's where I can play the big part in saying no most of the time. I don't think they're vetted properly, I don't think they're negotiated properly, and I could save the county tens of millions. Let's just put it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDaniel?
Wasn't ready for you. I was over here taking notes, forgive me. Well, let's back into this a little bit. Dominique, if I may, the, first off, I've been doing it for four years now, serving as your County Commissioner. I, college double-major, accounting, business, computers, with a minor in economics started me off. I started at a bank in 1999 and served as a bank board member for over 10 years and grew that bank in excess of a billion dollars' worth of assets. I own my own private real estate company and mining and excavating company. Now, they weren't nearly as large as our multi-billion-dollar company called Collier, but the 25 to 30 million dollar a year companies that I managed on a private sector level. I think it's important for all of us to know and remember, yeah, there is a budget team, but I am one of five, but in my first four years as your County Commissioner, there are $150 million of tax not being paid by Collier County residents, largely due to my efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Petcher?
Yeah, no, I create budgets every day. It's what I do regularly for my job. I manage associations. In my career, I probably created 30 budgets a year. I have to live by a budget, I work by a budget. Budgets is something that I do on a regular basis. So, something like the county, I would be able to help assist. I know there is a budgetary team, but I'll be able to assist with the budgetary to help them make the decisions and help them allocate the money correctly. And that's why I have the success in my career, is following a budget, creating a budget, and living by a budget the way it's supposed to be written.
Thank you. And Mr. LaCastro?
Well, one of the things I've said is this is more than an election, it's a job interview. Collier County has a $2 billion budget for 2021, so it's a matter of hiring professionals, executives, people that have balanced a budget, and more importantly, have spent taxpayer dollars wisely. As a base commander of several bases, one of them being the Air Force Academy, I got to go back to my alma mater and be the base commander. I've had billions of dollars' worth of assets on my bases, and I've regularly controlled hundreds of millions of taxpayer dollars. So, it's not just balancing my own checkbook, but it's knowing how to spend the money wisely. As an administrator here in East Naples, Physicians Regional, we had a very large budget as well. And so, that's where I think experience and qualifications do matter. One of the reasons why I am running for County Commissioner is because I know that the county has grown so much in the last 20 years, and every dollar that we have is precious. And the county doesn't spend their money, they spend taxpayer dollars. And so, I think it's more than just, do you know how to put together a budget, but do you know how to control the way that money is being spent and get the biggest bang for your buck? As I've said, as a former base commander, working at some of the highest levels in the military and in civilian healthcare systems, I've managed hundreds of millions of dollars, and every single penny of that has been important, and you have to know how to do it, and you have to have done it before if you're going to be applying for this job interview for Collier County.
Thank you very much. And back to you, Bob.
Thank you, Dominique. Stock Development is proposing a large primarily residential development. It's called One Naples at the corner of Vanderbilt Beach Road and Gulf Shore Drive. Hundreds in the community believe that Stock's requests for variances from the current zoning codes related to density, height setbacks, traffic implications, and the like are out of scale with the neighborhood. By granting variances, the obvious benefit to the county would be additional tax revenue. Would you vote yes to support this as proposed in spite of a pretty substantial, very substantial community resistance? You know, it's up to me to call somebody, so I'm going to go to Mark.
Okay. Thank you. It's a great question. I was actually at that Stock Residence Meeting up on Vanderbilt Beach Road at the library about in February, early March, and the residents weren't enough for, and I have some friends in Pelican Marsh who are also fighting this. Here's my feeling on it. I just don't think, was there's an empty piece of land, we could build these type of structures. We really represent the people of Naples and Collier County, and I think Stock has went out of their way to make accommodations and lower the amount of rooms that they were coming, and they're very professional. I've worked with Stock in the past, they're a great company. This is no hit towards them at all. But I think it's too big for us in Naples. The average home, the lowest-priced home in there, the condo in there, it's $5 million. I just don't think it fits into the quality of that small-town neighborhood thing that we have here in Naples, especially that area, like the lunchbox and all these other little things down there at Vanderbilt Beach 100 times. So, I don't think it fits into the community. I don't think we need it. I would vote no for Naples One.
Thank you, Mark. William Douglas?
Sorry about that. I did my mute. I am aware of Naples One, and I know they started with a very large building, and I know Stock has worked with the community to try to bring the size of the building back, push back the building to as far back as he could to meet the setbacks, along with putting bike paths in, setting lights on sidewalks, and he is trying his best. I know the residents are very large, large numbers up against not having the building. My feeling is that Stock needs to continue to do his best to be part of the neighborhood if he continues that, meet the codes as they need to be, and work with the residents. And I feel, you know, there's got to be a happy medium between that or Stock and the residents. I'm afraid if he doesn't reach that set, he might walk away, and they might not like what they get in the return, and that's the downside of it. So, I'm right there. If he can make it, he can. If he doesn't, I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, William. John Jenkins?
We have two different issues that faces as far as development goes, and our biggest issue is that we are not developing smartly, especially in District One. And I want to see a return to that. For instance, this is another example of a community that is now up in arms because they have a right to vote on a variance that has already been approved.
that has already been approved for whatever construction project. But they now feel that they have a right to stop development at whatever cost because there's a variance being asked. This happened exactly right next door to me with Enbrook, and I'm sure, uh, one of my competitors is going to remember that. They wanted to, they had a 496 approved structure, 496 density. They wanted to make it at 296 density. And when there was no, because everybody got up in arms, we don't want in our backyard. We don't want a backyard. Even though it was a better deal for the people and for the community, they were opposed to it. I went to the owner of D R Horton and I said, is there something that you can do to help the community get through this? And D R Horton took a look at it and they said, Mr. Jenkins, you know what we'll do? We'll make it so that when you egress our property, you can only turn to the left, only access 951 or Collier Boulevard.
Okay, Janet, I've got to cut you off again, John. I apologize.
I'm sorry.
But let's, let's move to Rick LaCastro.
I don't see the time on my phone, sorry.
One of the things I've said repeatedly is I'd rather see nothing built on an empty piece of land than the wrong thing. I don't think Stock is trying to shoehorn the wrong thing into a piece of property. And certainly when you have constituents up in arms, the people we represent, we want to listen to them. These are people that live in the community. So I, I definitely think that there's an equal medium and that's either build nothing on there because of what needs to go there won't fit. I mean, a developer is not going to build something that's going to lose money, tick off the community and then call it a success. So certainly, you know, that's not what we're trying to do as county commissioners either. I also think we need to look at the infrastructure around properties. I see a lot of really large things being built and then afterwards the roads have to be torn up because they were, um, they're too congested. We didn't put enough thought into traffic lights and safety and all that. And that's, that's doing things backwards. I've built thousands of houses as a base commander on my bases. And the first thing you do isn't build the monstrosity and see if it fits. You look at the infrastructure and you work from the, from the outside in. But I'd like to continue that conversation with not only the constituents, but with Stock Development and exhaust all possible options. You're not going to make everybody happy and I'd rather see nothing on that property than the wrong thing.
Thank you, Rick. Let's move to Bill McDaniel.
Okay. Well, I haven't made my mind up yet on Naples One, just so you know, Bob. There's still more information to come. You've been, I've been very well aware of the neighborhood information meetings and the input that has in fact come about from the community members. I, I know that there are underlying zoning rights that travel with that piece of property. Property rights that travel with that piece of property. And from what I understand today, what's being proposed, though it's been modified considerably by Stock Development, those intensities are, that Stock is proposing today are less than that is currently allowed on the property by the underlying zoning. So, um, the, the jury is still out. I think the community has been engaged and continues to be engaged. And then, uh, and then we'll ultimately see how it goes. I agree that infrastructure is a major requisite to support any growth.
Thank you, Bill. And now to Mike Patcher.
Yeah, this is a classic case of wealthy development overreach on the Collier citizens. You know, Naples One was originally slotted for two 18, uh, 18 story buildings and three, five story buildings. And Stock presented it to the, uh, to the constituents and the, the people in the area completely turned it down. Stock, Stock redid it. They, they, they presented it again in April and they, they, they turned it down again. Nobody's listening to the residents of the, uh, of the community. This is just like Rivergrass, South New Estates. Nobody's listening to the residents. There's not enough in infrastructure. It's going to cause more noise, more traffic. It's just not the right community for the, for the, right, not the right building for the area. I agree with everything Rick said. I, I think that they really need to get a survey out and see exactly what the constituents want. And the county commissioners actually need to listen to their constituents.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, Dominique.
All right. Um, I have a question from the audience. Um, what is your political philosophy on the role of government in the lives of free people? Very daily on question. I am going to start with Mr. Jenkins.
Very interesting that you'd start with me.
Mr. Jenkins, you are muted, I believe.
I am a proud citizen of the United States and I'm an immigrant. I'm the only immigrant in this race. I, uh, I chose to become a citizen of the United States. And it is really, it really is an honor to have that citizenship. But the greater honor is not necessarily in the citizenship itself and being able to say that I'm a citizen. The greatest honor is in the people of the land, of, of the country of the United States. That I grew up knowing as my neighbors and my friends, those people honored me with that citizenship. That's the greater honor. And so that, in a roundabout way, that's the answer to your question is that when we work together, when we look at each other as one, when we don't separate, when we don't divide, when we create solutions to problems together, rather than just going to our corners and throwing stones, we all win. And I want to be that conduit to us winning together.
Thank you. Um, Mr. LaCastro.
Well, being a 24-year military member, I've raised my hand many times and taken the oath to support the Constitution of the United States. I think, um, the role of government is to provide structure, um, to our country, but not excessive oversight. Um, I think that's what makes our country great. It's the will of the people. It's, um, having things go down to the lowest possible, um, level, um, where it can be controlled. That's why I think, you know, I've been told before, people say, oh, why do you want to run for county commissioner? And I say, um, all of us here, regardless of who's elected, will be able to affect more change and get more things done in the first month than some of the people running for Congress in their first year. And that's just the structure of how impactful local, uh, local, uh, public service is. I always say I'm not running to be a politician. I'm running to be a public servant. And so the role of government is provide the structure, but our job is to make sure those rights are not infringed upon. Whether it's, you know, being able to have freedom of speech, freedom of religion, spending our taxpayer dollars wisely, allowing people to have access to public areas and things like that. So lowest, lowest level, uh, possible, uh, with, uh, with citizens' rights being the top most important thing that we support and defend.
Thank you. Mr. Patcher.
Um, I believe the role of government and free citizens' lives is, is to drive parameters and protect against outside interference. I want to be the voice of the people, uh, but I also, I believe that, uh, there, there's a constitutional, there's, the constitution protects us from too much government oversight. I think that, uh, that as a role of government to provide the parameters, uh, to ensure public safety. I think public safety is, is, is a major issue. Uh, I think that the, the tax dollars need to be properly allocated to provide the proper public safety. And, uh, I think that, uh, that everybody needs to work together on this.
Mr. Bachelor.
I think it kind of dovetails from what I was saying previously where the government's main role is to inform, assist, help, that type of action, not to be telling anybody what to do ever, even, you know, Maple, the Naples City Council and Martha Island City Council canceling fireworks and things like that as far outreach. And I never thought a year ago, even six months ago, we would be talking about civil rights and liberties at a local level, but we are and it's getting serious. But as a true constitutionalist that I am, I mean, we have to provide the avenues in the east to use our freedoms, not to restrict them. I feel strongly about that. There would be no surprise when I'm elected as a commissioner, any decision I would make. I'd make it very clear before I'm going in there, I'm going to vote on taxes, civil liberties, the environment, anything. It should be very clear. And that's one of them.
Thank you. And Mr. Douglas.
Yes. I wore the flag on my sleeve for 30 years as a, uh, community worker in District One. And I, I stood up for the, uh, the people when they needed it. I believe in the constitution and we, the people. Government is there to protect us, uh, from outside issues and government, we're here as a, as Collier County Commissioners to set policies and to make sure policies are followed. We need to make sure people have their rights and continue to give them their rights and their voice. I'm here to work for the people. I will say, just like my colleague, I'm not here as a politician. I'm here for the people. I put 30 years of my life in this community. Our community paid for my salary and I continue want to serve this community and the people, not just District One, but all of Collier County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to the next question.
Thank you, Dominique. Uh, many advocate amenities such as, uh, public golf courses owned by the county to make access more affordable. Uh, would you support the development of county-owned courses or other county-owned amenities? And let's start off with, uh, Bill McDaniel.
Yeah, and I don't know if you skipped me on purpose on that last call, Dominique. Just so you know, it's, uh, last, it's okay. It's government, last time I looked, it's government, it's okay. It's all right. Uh, it's government of and buying for the people.
Take, take two times.
Okay. Well, i- if you don't mind, I, I just, I, I want to make sure that that gets said. I, I am an advocate for limited government. I think that on a regular basis, government has a tendency to reach out, overreach with regard to the constitutional rights of our citizen. I think local governments' main jobs are three and only three. Number one, keep my families and neighborhoods safe. Number two, move my people to and through roads, bridges, stormwater and the like. And then number three, quality of life, only when you've done everything you need to do on one and two. That's, that's the answer to the first question. Now, Bob, the answer to the second question is yes, no, maybe, forever seldom occasionally. Uh, I have looked into ad nauseam, the operational aspects of government trying to run golf course. Uh, I think that project we're doing over in Golden Gate City at 951 in the Parkway is an amazing project. And as you know, there's multiple elements that are coming in there. There were protective rights for the citizenry that lived in Golden Gate City with regard to that golf course that got taken away, deed restrictions that legally got removed. We're, we're doing a veterans nursing home there as well, along with a housing affordability project. So there's many aspects of that. But on a regular basis, as we were moving through, I looked after, I looked at multiple municipally owned and operated golf courses and didn't really see any economic feasibility in the government providing that.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, Mike?
Uh, I don't think that is the government's job to, to provide, uh, to provide a golf course for, for Rob. I think that, I think parks are another thing, but I think a golf course is, uh, something only certain individuals played and only certain, certain individuals will actually use. Uh, and now the government is, uh, is going to make a park somewhere. I agree. But if, if they want to, if they want to open up a golf course and try and generate profit, they need to leave it to the professionals, uh, leave it to, leave it to the experts and leave it to the, uh, the country clubs that, that, that provide, for, provide that service already. Collier County has plenty of golf courses if somebody wants to play golf, play golf.
Thank you, Mike. Let's move to, uh, John Jenkins.
Uh, I think that, uh, this golf course that has been proposed and Mr. McDaniel's has done a, a phenomenal job in that district, um, uh, heading this thing, uh, sorry. It, it, it's so much more complex than just the golf course itself. It comes down to the impact of the community. It comes down to all these different avenues and people that are lobbyists. I know some of my opponents, uh, understand lobbying. But it, when it, when it comes down to it, to me, it's what best serves the interests of the people in the community. And I understand that, you know, the county got a lot out of it and the developers got what they wanted and all these. I, what I want to know is, is what, what did the residents that were there before all this happened? What did they get out of it? Um, are, are they better off today than they were then? And what is the community benefit for the future? Those things I think that we often put too far behind the court and don't look at it in the forefront.
John, thank, thank you for your comments, John. Let's, let's move to Rick, Rick LaCastro.
Well, I love the idea of the county being in the quote golf course business. But like I said before, I'd rather see nothing built than the wrong thing built. And if the county really felt that purchasing that golf course saved that valuable piece of real estate from the wrong thing going in there, I, I'm not against that, but I would like to see a fairly quick plan. So the golf course has been purchased at a pretty high price. And every day that that golf course sits and we continue to sort of debate what should go there and the proper makeup and the proper mix. And are we going to have a veterans home? Is there going to be assisted living? Are we going to have nine holes or 18 holes? That golf course doesn't get any newer. I've sat in on all those meetings as well. I'm not a county commissioner, so I don't have the big thick book with the leather bound cover that has all the details in it. But as a citizen, I sit there and say, if we're going to invest taxpayer money on the golf course, let's flip it into something then that is going to make it great for the community, great for the people that already live around there. And also is, is a, is a great plan. It's sort of now seems like it's, it's, it has stalled a little bit. And I'm not so sure I want to be in the real estate business just buying up a bunch of things and then hoping we can turn it into something better.
Thank you so much. Let's move to William Douglas.
All right. First and foremost, uh, Collier County does not need to be running golf courses. Communities through the past and the demographic of the communities changed throughout the years. Some golf courses people like and they move away or pass away and new people come in and they don't like the golf course. What happened in Golden Gate, I thought was a very phenomenal, great time to bring in workforce housing, senior living, veterans. We went with a nonprofit organization to build that. And I think, you know, to help communities, which I think everybody paid attention to, to the residents around this golf course was great. And we listened to the communities, uh, and the residents. And I know there's many other golf courses out there and Collier County has set a standard and they might hit the board. And as long as, uh, things are followed correctly and turned around quickly, I think it's a great thing. Thanks.
Thank you very much, William. And now Mark, Mark Bachelor.
Okay. Well, as a golfer in Collier County here since 2005, we used, well, we used to say this at Xerox, ready, fire, aim. Let's buy it and then we'll see how we're going to fix it. And we're going to find out how much it's going to cost to run it. And that's exactly what we're doing. We buy the worst golf course in Naples, bar none, absolutely an atrocious golf course. We paid too much money for it. And then after we buy it, we go, well, let's see how much it's going to cost to run the golf course. So now we wanted a golf course for the average guy to play. It's been closed for six months. And what I read about the things that they're doing and refurbished the course, it costs over a hundred thousand dollars a fairway to redo a golf course. It's going to cost, it was supposed to be affordable. Well, I'm going to tell you right now, for that company to manage that golf course, it's going to cost us more to golf those nine holes than it does 18 holes anywhere else. That's a promise. You wait and see. We should have no business. The government has no business buying businesses. We need to manage our business wisely, purchases wisely. This trying to get into a business, let business find its own center. It works all by itself. We're there to give incentives, tax incentives, zoning, uh, exceptions to make growth happen, but.
Okay, Mark. Mark, thank you very much. I'm going to turn it back to Dominique.
All right. What will be the impact of COVID-19 on the county budget? And what would you support to resolve Collier County deficit? And what would you support to resolve Collier County deficits? And I am going to start with Mr. LaCastro.
Well, the impact's been huge. I mean, and I personally know a lot of business owners, I'm sure we all do, and from little mom and pop operations to even some huge ones. I mean, my son works for Enterprise Rent A Car and I have some friends that work at Hertz Corporate. And so, and some of them went at a very high level and they've lost their jobs. So the, the revenue impact has been ginormous. As far as how that's gonna affect the budget, that's why we need to have to plan, we need a plan to get back on our feet quickly. And I think when the healthcare numbers showed that, not that everything had gone away and everything was cured and we could get back to normal, but as, as the numbers weren't as extreme as what we thought, I mean, every day is money for these businesses. And it's easy to say, stay home, stay close, stay at twenty-five percent, stay at fifty percent. And I'm not saying that's not being prudent, but we are in a much deeper hole every single day when we just continue to call a timeout. And I think that we could have definitely pulled the trigger on some positive things that would have reinvigorated our, our local economy here a lot quicker. I think the jury's still out on how it's, it's, it's affected our budget and what our deficit might be. So I think that's where having business experience and qualifications managing very large numbers does matter. Balancing a ten dollar checkbook and managing a two billion dollar company are two totally different things. It's not the same.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
All right, we are talking, the question was county budget, correct?
Yes.
Correct. And it's gonna be a huge impact on Collier County budget. Through gas tax, through visitors tax, bed tax, you name it. We are not gonna make the money that we made in two thousand and nineteen. And the only way we're gonna be able to deal with those issues is we're gonna have to really look at our budget and we're gonna have to probably streamline it and reduce projects throughout Collier County that, and we're just gonna have to put them on hold. We've had to do that through hurricanes and we can manage to do it again and build a plan so we can recover quickly from what, what this virus has done to Collier County. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McDaniel.
Well, I haven't been doing anything else. This is what I've been reading. It is the Collier County budget, the two-plus-billion-dollar budget that Rick regularly mentions. And I have been apprised by our senior staff. We collected ninety-five-plus percent of the ad valorem before the virus became upon us and the local stay-at-home orders in the state issued stay-at-home orders. We did lose or did suffer a reduction in income in the TDT tax, tourist development tax and the sales tax. But in my preliminary meetings with senior staff as late as last Friday, we're okay. As you know, Collier County is an extremely conservative community. I've been participatory in enhancing our reserves. You, you take your reserve monies and utilize them in a manner when circumstances like what currently are prevalent come about. We need to watch going forward so that we don't overrun those reserves. But for the most part, tune in Thursday morning all day, we got budget here.
Thank you. Mr. Petcher.
Yeah, thank you. I think the impact of COVID nineteen on our, our local economy has been, has been pretty drastic. We've had a lot of loss, loss of revenue for tourism, hospitality. I don't think it's over yet. I think that there's still more to come. A mothley is a real problem. There's a lot of workers out there that, that, there's over twelve hundred cases alone in a mothley. And those are the people that provide food to our tables. And the relief funds, we need to allocate funds from the relief funds to assist in a mothley. The, the fire departments shouldn't be going on weak news and asking for resources. I think that, that if we properly allocate the funds, we can get through this.
Thank you. Mr. Bachelor.
Well, I'm pretty sure, I don't know the exact amount, but the federal government will be providing to many communities like ours and counties COVID nineteen money this year. Now, tax revenue's gotta be down significantly. There are plenty of money in reserves to help us get through paying police and fire and, you know, our bills that we usually have to pay. But any of this money comes in, it also has to be to encourage our, and money to assist that our businesses that have been suffered from the COVID nineteen. Many of these business owners lost fifty, seventy, eighty percent of their revenues for the year. So they're gonna suffer a lot more than the county is. So any of this money that we can go in to assist them with low-interest loans so they can pay their rents and mortgages and get them back up in business, we do not want these people to fall and move away. This is gonna be a long time to recover. So I think the county has to use some of that COVID nineteen money to assist the small business owner.
Thank you. And Mr. Jenkins.
I am a small business owner. I have been for twenty-three years. I've always been in business all my life, through various interactions. I know about the impact of, of societal issues as well as health issues. I, I know as a small business owner what it means to sacrifice my grocery list at the end of the week to make sure that my employees get their payroll. So I'm not coming at you with a bunch of numbers from the county budget and all that. I'm gonna tell you, folks, we're in a world of hurt financially from COVID nineteen and it's just beginning. We have been irresponsible in the way that we manage this. Our governor should have shut down the state before March break instead of letting all those kids come in here, get infected and then go back home to wherever they went to and still denying that was even a thing. The last four days, we've had the four most significant consecutive increases in cases. It's not because of testing, folks. We aren't doing that much testing. This is exponential. That account, the last four days accounts for seventeen percent of the number of cases total in Florida. We have to get real people. This is gonna get really ugly. We have to be smart about this.
Thank you. All right, back to you, Bob.
Okay, thank you. This is from the audience. Do you agree with Collier School Board and Lee County Commission action to cancel Alfie Oaks' food supply contracts? Now I'm gonna start with Rick LaCastro.
Well, I tell you, I support freedom of speech. And so I, I've heard and have read what Alfie Oaks has, has said. He's obviously a, a large business owner here in town. But I think whether we agree or disagree, the, his freedom of speech and to do it peaceably is what I would support. Now however, if you are a contractor for the government or the county, you know, I had contractors on my military bases. We do sort of care what you say, what you don't say and that sort of thing to a certain extent. I think that's between him and the school board. But, you know, part of competition is that the county gets to decide who they want to buy things from and who they don't. And part of his right of freedom of speech is to say what he wants and if it affects his business. But he thinks his freedom of speech is more important and so be it. It sure sounds like that that's what he feels and he certainly has a lot of supporters. But there's a lot of competition out there and a lot of people that sell vegetables and it's up to the, the county to get the, to secure the contractor that they feel best represents their core values.
Thank you, Rick. Let's move to Mark Batchelor.
There we go. I would ask Lee County, why did they have the contract with them in the beginning? I'm assuming it was pricing and the quality of food. It was a business decision. And Lee County should maintain a business decision. To make a decision or change your contract because you don't like what someone says, we're, we're silencing people again. You know, don't speak out, submit, obey. Everyone has to say the same thing, hold hands and say, and go the same way with these political views anymore. So he's un, very unfairly treated. And if I was a commissioner in Lee County or not, but if it was in Collier County, I think they need to play a part in that. They, they need to honor the contracts they signed and not based on somebody's personal opinion, political opinion. It has no influence on a contract.
Thank you, Mark. William Douglas?
Yes, I concur with a couple of the colleagues. Alfie does have freedom, freedom of speech. He spoke his mind and, and we have to applaud him for that. And businesses do have standards that they fill what they get from their folks that they hire to do a service for them. That's their decision. They have that right. As long, it's a shame that his, his freedom of speech can be stifled a little bit. And, you know, he, he's got other supporters out there. So when it comes down to it, as long as he's got his freedom of speech, businesses will have, have a standard as I did as a fire service. I had to pay attention on what I said out on the street and when I was off duty. That could be held, held against me and get me dismissed from the fire department. So you have to pay attention on what you say and be very careful, careful how you say it. So.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, William. Hi, John Jenkins.
Yeah, I'm a small business owner, have been. First Amendment, I absolutely support Alfie's First Amendment rights to speak exactly how he wishes to speak. But like I did with my two children that I raised, like I did as a substitute teacher for the Collier County School System, like I did as a baseball coach, like I did as a guardian ad litem. Like I have done whenever I've tried to inspire another human being to be better than what they are, I've told them about the lesson of what happens next? And Alfie has every right to say whatever he wants to say. That's his business decision, but what happens next, Alfie? If people don't like it and people get upset, you can't have it both ways. What happens next? I support your right to say what, what you're doing, but don't, don't tell people that they can't not be upset if they don't like what you have to say. Character matters, Alfie. Character matters.
Thank you, John. Bill McDaniel.
Yes, I concur. The, the First Amendment rights are entitled to everybody. And consequences are what they are. Alfie certainly has the right to, to speak and say what he wishes. I, I, I'm dismayed because of the divisiveness within our country, within our community. The, this lack of communication against different belief systems, different political parties has out for, just because you and I don't agree on a political matter, I'm going to punish you and/or stop talking to you because you're, you're not in absolute concert with my belief system. I, I am saddened. I was actually told that Collier County had not yet canceled their agreement. It was proposed to, but I heard that Lee County did. I hope that Collier County has not done that yet. And I hope that Lee County would seriously give it a reconsideration.
Thank you, Bill. And Mike Petcher.
Yeah, just like everybody else said, this is definitely an infringement on the freedom of speech. But Alfie Oaks, Alfie Oaks employs over two thousand people. He donates millions of dollars of food every year. But when you're, when you're responsible for two thousand people's jobs, you really need to watch out what you're saying because you're responsible for their livelihood. I do that, I do agree with Mark. Why, why was Oaks chosen? Was it, was it a, was it a pricing standpoint? We're in a capitalist, we're, we're in a capitalist country, we, we should shop around. If, 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 if we're not getting the, the, the right price that we're looking for, then shop around. But if Alfie Oaks has given us the, the right price and the best product and the best quality of the material, then I see no reason to cut any time.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have time for another question, Rick?
Sure, let's have one more.
Okay, Dominique.
All right. Affordable housing continues to be an issue for those in the service industry. So how would you address the affordable housing issue? And I'm going to start with Mr. Petcher.
Well, I think the affordable housing issue, we should, we should stop the bigger, major developments. We should, it depends on what kind of affordable housing you're talking about. If you're talking about for veterans, absolutely. Affordable housing as it is for schoolteachers, for our first responders. I think that, that all these, these places, we do need someplace or a project for these, for the affordable housing for these, for these individuals. I think that golf course is, they, they proposed a veteran center there. I think that's, that's great. But, but instead of profiting off of golf course, I think we should, we should have some affordable housing in the, in the form of, in the form of veterans or teachers or first responders only.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins.
I'm sorry, I missed the question. Please repeat. I, I had a connection problem.
That's okay. Affordable housing continues to be an issue for those in the service industry. How would you address this?
I actually have a plan for, to address a certain section of affordable housing. And I would love to go into it in detail with the audience and with, with your members. What it entails is really building homes at one-third the cost of what they're being built at now. That sounds like it's an unrealistic, flying-the-sky thing, but I did it. I put a, I put in to my entire home a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And when I turned the key in the door with, with the assessed value of the home, land, everything included, I had three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We can make as a county through a cooperative effort, dreams of homeownership come true. And I'd love to extend some, an invitation to come and talk to me about this plan. I've got some investors possibly lined up if we can put through with the county and the community banks. But affordable housing is the bridge to which we are going to make Collier County work. We have to respect the people that make Collier County work and we don't have affordable housing for them. We don't have reliable public transportation for them. You're basically saying, go elsewhere.
Thank you. Mr. LaCastro.
As a COO of Physicians Regional in East Naples, I've offered jobs to surgeons and housekeepers. And I found every, everyone from doctors to housekeepers at times have come back saying, I love the job, wanted to work here. But we spent the last five days looking around in the community and we couldn't find anything that we could afford. And so we're moving back to Birmingham, Alabama or wherever. So I've seen it, seen it on the front lines. I think there's, there's several options. I hate using the term affordable housing because I think the average citizen immediately defaults to thinking low-income housing. But I'll give you an example of a project that I did sit in the audience at one of the county commissioner meetings. There was a project called The Lore. It's up on Livingstone. I think it's about three hundred and sixty-three units. And one of the things that the county commissioners did that was really positive was block off a chunk of the three hundred and sixty-three units, make those a lesser price for workforce-type housing. But we have to make sure that that's just not for six months or that those are all units that face the garbage cans or maybe they're, they're, they have less quality. But if you do it right, you have an incredible facility of very high quality and you're able to put workforce-type folks in there, doctors, nurses, police and what have you. But then that discount needs to be something that's very long-term or in perpetuity. Not twelve months later, the inventory just goes back to the general population at a full price. Then you haven't fixed anything. And I'm not saying we can do that in every single development, but there's a lot of developments that pop up here where we miss the opportunity to block off some affordable housing for our, our workforce here in Collier County.
Thank you. Mr. Bachelor.
Well, I think the affordable housing can be fixed with a couple of solutions. One is we have the highest impact fees in the state of Florida. It's a problem. It has to be looked at, it has to get decided. And I go, you can go on the website and figure out your impact fees and it goes to the school and it goes to this. I get, get all that, but the math is wrong. You come from the business world, you don't believe anybody, go back to the drawing board, give me a number I can work with. The second part of it, all these homes, if you think about it, no, are built for investors. They're not built for homeowners. You know, for hundreds of years in Florida and throughout the country, we just built homes. We built neighborhoods. And what drives up the cost of these homes are the, the extreme amenities. The, the clubhouses, the pools, the gates, the, the walls. And coming from that business, you know, you add And coming from that business, you know, you add, you can add $100,000 to a cost of the home just with the amenities alone. So I would like to encourage builders to build neighborhoods like that, that people want to live in. Because even my wife, we're in our 60s, we did not want a gated community. We wanted a low amenity neighborhood, and it makes the homes more affordable. Tie that in with the lower impact fees and you can make homes affordable without doing any subsidized from the government, and it, and it could work.
Thank you. Mr. McDaniel?
Thank you. I want to, I, first off, it's about supply and demand. I am the one who shifted the vernacular from affordable housing to housing affordability. Collier County has an affordability issue, not an affordable housing issue. Mark correctly mentioned, we are the highest impact fee county in 67 counties in the state of Florida. One of the things that came out of the ULI study that was completed in 2017, the first year I was in, was every $1,000 incremental increase in the price of a home precludes 133 people in our demographic and our income brackets to be able to afford a home in our community. So taxation, which an impact fee is, a singular, one-time upfront tax and imposition on the first person in, is one of the biggest prohibitive factors that we have for affordability. The other side is supply and demand. I have since I became commissioner approved over 3,400 multifamily home projects in our community. And I know I might have more to say, but I'll wait till another time.
Thank you. And Mr. Douglas?
All right. Well, I completely agree with Commissioner McDaniels. It is supply and demand and, and we are lacking, lacking that part of it. I don't like to use affordable housing. It gives people bad taste, a taste in their mouth. I do feel it needs to be spread throughout Collier County. I like to use the word workforce housing, senior living housing and veterans, veterans housing. We need to do a better job, and I think we have to go in and look at our land development codes and growth management codes. So when these builders do come in, we have something set in the place. We can't force them to do it. Those that are doing it is great. Again, the Golden Gate Golf Course, that's a fantastic project going on. Our impact fees are high, one of the highest in the state. But we also have to remember, they might be high, but our percentage for this Collier County tax is still one, some of the lowest in the state. So it's, it's a give and take there. And our millage rate, if it stays low, you know, it's, it's a good thing. But if we lower our standards on our impact fees, our miller rate's going to go up and once again. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I guess that concludes our questioning then. Thank you very much to the moderators. Bob, we appreciate you helping us out. Dominique, well done. It's been a great conversation. We appreciate you leading us through that. And we appreciate the candidates and their participation. It takes a lot to, to run for office and we always want to express our gratitude for you being willing to do that. And we want to hear from you one more time with a closing statement. And so like I did for the introductions, I chose by drawing them out of the hat, the order of responses here for the final statements. We'll again begin with District One, and in District One, we'll begin this time with John Jenkins. John, for a final statement.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you hosting this opportunity. It's, it's all about reaching the people of District One and letting them know what we can provide for them. I've often said, it's not, yes, I'm a Democrat, yes, I'm running as a Democrat, that's not an issue for District One. There's nothing coming across my desk as commissioner that has a D or an R stamped behind it. I'm a local guy, I'm a small business owner, I'm a father of two children. I know what it means to be a caring, responsible citizen here in Collier County, and I want to represent you. I want to represent the sea. I want to represent clean water, our children, our community in Collier County and given a chance on November 3rd, 2020, winning with John Jenkins 2020, there's going to be an amazing new time for Naples, Marco Island, East Naples, Everglade City, Isles of Capri, Goodland.
Well, thank you, John. Appreciate you being here. I'm glad to have you participate today. Thanks for coming. Next up from District One, Rick LaCastro. Rick?
Well, thank you very much. As I said, this is a job interview, not an election. This is a $2 billion county with a lot of moving parts, and we talked about a lot of big issues here. So it's not a matter of just going in and trying to do the best you can. I think giving back to local public service, you have to have something to give back. I have a lot of depth of business experience in my military time as well, and I look forward to bringing that to Collier County. One thing I do want to say to the Florida Citizens Alliance, you know, we talked about a lot of different things with the county, but you all are doing so much for education in the state of Florida, and I think, you know, we're all honored to be part of your, your forum here today. Getting back, back to the county, you have to know a lot more than just District One. Like I have said in debates, you can fight for District One all you want, but you'll lose a lot of votes if you don't have credibility and influence with the other four county commissioners because there's five equal votes. Sometimes there's some citizens that don't understand that. They say, oh, you don't need to talk to me, I'm not in District One. Well, I, I've got fingerprints and footprints all over Collier County, and I look forward to not only representing District One, but then making all of Collier County much better than it is. It's changed a lot in 20 years. It takes a lot more experience and how to sit in a seat and manage the tax perimeters with professionalism, expertise and qualifications. Thank you. I look forward to earning your vote.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here with us today, Rick. Next up also from District One is William Douglas. Mr. Douglas, please.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Florida Community Alliance for having us today, the mediators, moderators for allowing us to answer your questions. I've been in the county for 35 years. I've been all over Collier County, not just District One. I'll be representing every, every person in this county. Doesn't matter what, what, if you're Democrat, Republican, it doesn't matter. I will give you that voice. I've been here for 35 years. I've seen what has worked in Collier County, what hasn't worked for Collier County, and I've worked very, very hard in District One, along with Isles of Capri, Goodland, Marco, Coe Flank, Port of the Isles, been around, all the way up to the north side of town. I know what, what people want. And I can hit the road running, taking the seat, and that's what it takes, someone that already knows something about Collier County. So thank you again tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here, Bill. And now to Mark Bachelor, our final District One candidate, Mark.
Okay, well, thanks. The questions were really great, and we haven't had a lot of opportunities to get out there and talk to many people in actually in about three months. So I'm just speaking for myself and all of us that we really do appreciate the opportunity. But I think it's becoming more clear as time goes on and through your intelligent questioning, it's really going to take somebody with the tools to be able to face the difficult challenges for Collier County in the future. Look at them. We're talking about significant growth. We're talking about clean water. We're talking about taxes. We're talking about revenue shortfall in taxes. These are serious issues that if you don't have the tools that you've worked with your entire life, it's certainly, you don't want somebody up there struggling to make a good decision and a sound decision that's going to help the people for District One and really the entire county. But again, I want to thank everybody for listening and remember me on August 18th. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mark. We appreciate you being here. Glad to have you as part of this. We want to turn now to our candidates from District Five, and first up from District Five is Bill McDaniel. Bill?
Yes, first off, I'd like to thank the, the Florida Citizens Alliance as well. We have these opportunities to share our viewpoints and our thought processes imperative. I want to say this, as I said at the beginning on the opening, it's been my honor to serve as your county commissioner. And we talk a lot about the diversity within our community. It's, it's impossible to line up with somebody 100% of the time, especially somebody that's in the seat, having to pull the trigger every single day. I hope that the folks that live in District Five know and understand that I've done my best to add the balance, to provide for the necessities of our community. In closing, I want to say this, we've got a lot done in our first four years in excess of $600 million of capital projects that are going on in eastern Collier County, and there's more to be done. I, I really ask for your support come August. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate you being here. And I guess Mike Petcher gets the last word from all the candidates. So Mike, we'd turn now to you for a closing statement from District Five.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to thank the Florida Citizens Alliance for having me. I want to thank the moderators for giving me a chance to answer all these questions. I would also just like to reiterate, I'm just a regular guy, you know? I'm, I'm just, I was born here. I'm just trying to save my community. I have, I have dirt under my fingernails and calluses on my hand. I'm not a politician. I stutter, I fidget, but you know what? I'm here representing the people of my community, and I want to save my community. So that's just who I am. I, I just want to let everybody know that, that I will fight for you, and I, I will do everything I can to make your voice heard so that we can keep a smaller government in Golden Gate or in, in all of Collier County.
Thank you very much, Mike. So glad you could join us today. Appreciate you being a part of this. And to all of the candidates, we want to say again, we really appreciate you being willing to put yourselves out there. It's a lot of work to be a candidate, and it takes a lot of effort and time and energy, and we appreciate you being willing to do that for all of us. Thanks to the moderators for their questions. We appreciate their hard work to prepare for this and, and to lead us through that. Just so our audience will know, the forum was recorded and we'll be posting that on our website, flcaction.org, flcaction.org in a day or two. And at that same website, you'll find more information and materials that will help you as a voter make a good decision for the elections ahead. We'd also like everyone to learn more about the Florida Citizens Alliance, and you can learn more about us at our website. We do work to bring solutions and define solutions for K through 12 education challenges in Florida. We've been pretty effective at that in a number of levels, and we continue to work on that. Our website is goflca.com, goflca.com, and we'd encourage you to go there and learn about us. And of course, you can find out more about us at our Florida Citizens Alliance Facebook page. Well, thanks again, everybody, for joining us. We had a great time together. We look forward to doing some more of these kinds of things to help the voters of Collier County. But for now, we leave you with these words. May God bless America during these challenging days, and especially, may God bless you and keep you and your family safe and well. Good afternoon. Thanks again for joining us.